Mr. President. A potential agency to the United States of America and to the other states or nation under the law, the end of this world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to be here and make decisions. And we also thank you that we can live in the country like we do. And we can build democracy. We see some of things happening around the world, and we're just thankful that we can live here and be a part of the development process. So we just thank you for that and ask for your continued blessings on us and this country to live in. Come on.
Make sure to always read copies of our minutes from the last meeting, that additional corrections or additions.
Tony, you made that one change, right?
Yes.
I make a motion to put them in the system.
Second. Next had a change.
Just a bit.
No, I think something did.
Rex and me.
Oh, got it.
Have a motion. I'll raise a favor after closing. All right. Close. Okay, the next item of interest here is Mary Berry from the Assessors Office. What does anyone have a request?
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
I'm working this side. Okay, as you guys already know, that I've submitted additional for equipment, and the reason being is for computers for appraisal research, which is now called vision, but they're the ones that do our reassessment. So right now, they're the only ones in the office that still have the BDI computers and that we've been having issues with. They come in and then computers aren't even working. They can't get them to work. IT has, you know, they, I spoke with Mike and he said that the communication paths that the BDI relies on are malfunctioning and they're, want everybody to go away from BDI, but you know, it takes budgets and that. But they use the computers for the graphics because we do drawings in the Assessors Office, and so they're doing that, the new construction. The GIS is used a lot by them, and there's only one server, according to Mike, that supports the BDI. They're not here like all the time, like every day, but they are here, gosh, it probably averages a couple of days a week. And then from March to June, Luanne in my office who does the personal property, she uses the one computer back there so she can be kind of away from everybody because personal property is personal, and so you know, others are not supposed to be listening. So she uses that basically from March through June. So I wasn't, I know it's kind of early in the year to be asking for an additional, but I wasn't really expecting them to kind of drop, I guess, this quickly. So that's about it.
What's the amount again, Mary?
Pardon me?
What's the amount again?
Well, I have a thousand dollars in there now that I budgeted. It was for $1,200.
Twelve additional.
Additional, yeah, which it's, like I said, it's in the reassessment, and I don't have the paper in front of me. I think it was a hundred and sixty-some thousand in there.
Yeah, sixty-four.
Okay, yeah. So, and we'll have two settlements this year, so you know, that'll...
And it's on our place, the ones that are in there now.
Yeah, to get rid of the BDI ones because they're, they're just not working. And we're paying these guys like almost $400 an hour is what the contracts, or excuse me, not an hour, a day is almost what the contract, that's what the contract states. And so to me, it's a lot less expensive to spend, you know, an additional $1,200 on a computer where other than them sitting there or one of us having to give up and say, hey, you want to use our computer? And then, you know, it's, it's just not effective to do it that way. So.
I know it's a pretty small amount, but there's nothing we can transfer instead just to keep things cleaner, especially this early in the year.
Yeah, I'm going to be coming back for additional because with the 3,000 series, that basically is all for appraisal research as well because we pay them monthly. They take our pictures and all the stuff that they do for us over the course of a year. I can, if you want me to, but I possibly will come back for an additional later. That's, that's up to you guys.
We already advertised for this, haven't we?
Yeah, it had to be. And we need to get these ordered.
Yeah, it's not something foreseeable.
Yeah, because it's a two different series. I only have one in the 4,000 series, and so I, yes, I would have to come in front of you guys.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Does that clarify how long are those considered anyway?
Back when we had the computer issue with Rex, was how many years ago? It's, it's been a long time. It was whatever, everything kind of...
The whole BDI has been...
That's what, yes, it was, yes.
It was basic.
Right. And it's, we've just taken, I think we've replaced two computers a year over the course of the last year. We did two, the year before that we did two, and so now we'll do two, and then that should be, everybody should be set to go. And we're still going to keep the displays. Mike said we can still use those, so that should be it, hopefully. Knock on.
It just, it just goes to where I was, for $1,200, there's a $64,000.
In the fund.
In the fund, so.
There's a thousand budgeted now, but I'm asking for an additional $1,200. According to, and again, I'm not trying to throw Mike under the bus. I'm only as good as what he tells me. According to him, he said that that should be, he said it should be around $2,000. So I put another 200 on for any, anything else that might, so it's kind of where I'm at.
Again, I think it does get to the lack of having this type of stuff we need to eventually, I know it's not going to happen overnight, but we need to have this type of thing on the schedule so we know, you know, it was a loss of five years or six or whatever it is, but it will help the budget process and also, you know, just know exactly when and how much spending our money and keep our IT at, at a more predictable angle. So, but.
What, Brian, are you looking at? Any particular?
I literally, I rely on Mike for all of that. He, I just will let him know, and she knows that this is coming or that I'm coming here today. Anyway, I don't know what he...
Computers all go through Mike because of cybersecurity. He has to dictate what kind of money we put.
And he said that the response time or the turnaround time on ordering, ordering them is not near what it was, you know, a few years ago. He said that typically they can probably get them in about two weeks, hopefully, so, which would just be great because like I said, Luanne started in March for the personal property, and they're going to be kind of coming in too. And so it's, it's going to kind of be a circus there for a little bit, but it'll work out.
We got a motion.
Have a motion in a second to approve the additional appropriation for computer purchases at Assessors Office. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks.
Shannon?
Um, so I just had myself put on the agenda kind of as support, but also so we wouldn't forget to discuss what we talked about in wager view this morning. So I'll let you.
Sure. Yeah, so this morning, um, we had three propositions, one from Golden Meadows, EMA and IT. Golden Meadows, the recommendation, so basically for both of those, it's the same situation, is that they've got two part-time women who replace us with one total time. So in both of those, the scenario is similar in that their wages budgeted and that within their budget would cover the change. So it wouldn't cost anything extra in their budget. There is extra, but it could be in the commissioner's budget for the benefits side of it. So between the two of them combined, I think you're off the $50,000 of extra benefits. So wages are the same, does not change any budgets. The question is on the commissioner's side, can their budgets support the extra benefits if that happened to happen in extras? So we were kind of different to Sam, and Sam, you're thinking that, what were you thinking on that?
Uh, but what I'm looking at, our budget, I think we're going to be okay with the additional.
Which means we don't think we need an additional for those. We think they're all fits within those like budget. Then in addition, the EMA position would be moving from two 94s to one 95, reasoning being that it's any sixes or typically number two positions, any fours or regular RPs. This one is kind of a hybrid because there's only one extra person, so she is a number two, but isn't really supervising anybody, so running between the five makes a lot of sense. And then for Golden Meadows, they would say any one or two, depending if they had the serve safe or not. So no changes on that side. And then on the IT, that one is a brand-new position, but that was in the budget this last year, wrote for the new budget last year for this year. And it would be that kind of the entry level ticket taking support, you know, type stuff. So that one would just basically budget it out what was in the budget. So that would be uncatatized like the rest of IT, and it's at 24 an hour. So that's, that's the recommendation.
Do we have somebody hired for that position?
I had to go to commissioners first and then you guys, and then I'll start like my whole process.
I remember approving it. I'm curious.
Yeah.
Do you like motion, that, that recommendation? Second.
Okay, so I'm going to approve the recommendations on HR for the appointed positions. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tony has informed me that Parks and Recreation won't be here this morning for their appointed time, so.
They, they are, they're the, Commissioner instructed to get close for the request they had. That's what Jamie is working on now, is getting close.
I think they're trying to get some, a little bit of money too.
Yeah, yeah. So, so he didn't need to be here today. I have a physical question.
Stan? Stan?
What's that?
Just curious, look, however, your guy's budget is at $50,000 being approved with no additional. Just curious. For the benefits.
Well, we take care of all the...
The perfs of security.
I will say, we usually end up doing additional because your perp and your taxes is an S.
Is that right?
I mean, almost every year. Yeah, I mean, we budget, I mean, like you take time, I kind of took into consideration raises and stuff like that, but you're never, every year when you get down to December, you're low on money and you either have to transfer or do an additional.
Just curious.
So there's no real way of figuring it out for sure. Yep, that's going to cover. And we did add a little bit extra this year, but I mean, it definitely wasn't added in to add new full-time employees. But I would say more than likely, it will be an additional given here. Yeah, I added some cushion into it, but not.
I just don't know that we can absolutely positively say right now, but it is possible. May not know that for a while till later on in the year.
Like say the perp, let's say we had...
We'll just want to keep that in mind down the road, but if you think there's fifty a hundred or sixty is like, if you're sorry, just keep that in mind, you know, if we consulted other positions, there's less cushion there.
Any other comments or?
I guess you will. All right, you can go on.
Yes. Okay, Parks and Recreation is off the schedule, so, Billy Murray?
The only thing that I have today is Resolution 2023. Bree, what number would the resolution state? We have a new resolution. This is just approving the sale of the county-owned real estate at the Golden Meadows property, and it does indicate that the county council and commissioners had both approved it. So we're just doing this resolution to formalize the vote that was taken in January.
She's looking up the number there?
Bree's looking at the number. So we had a few other housekeeping matters that I'll go over all of those with Tony when we get to the other matters presented or the auditor session.
Not open.
Sorry?
It's not, it's not opening.
See if I can find it.
Uh, three.
Three.
You put a resolution, you put a three.
Three, right?
Yeah.
Do sign this, right, because this is where the, yeah, that's...
This is already memorializing the agreement that you, the vote you already took.
We get a motion over it? I get it?
Yeah, we need a motion to approve the motion.
Probably approved the...
That's, that's right. You're right. Sorry about that. Just motion in a second to approve the formal resolution memorializing the prior vote.
And was it unanimous last time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm making sure nobody got accidentally voted against me too. Well, it was not unanimous.
So if it wasn't, you might not want to sign this.
It was not unanimous. If you didn't...
A lot of John did not vote in favor of several of our jobs, so I probably don't want to sign that. So he has, if there's a base side, otherwise don't sign it. Bob and John had voted no. There it is. It was just signing.
That, that was signed because you didn't vote for it.
Right.
So you and Bob both signed, and you changed your mind today. I just want to...
Because today, if I'm going to motion in second on approving Resolution 2023-3, you have an opportunity to vote no, or vote yes, whether you want to vote.
John gave rules for parents.
Yep.
Yeah. Otherwise, what, what?
Do you have any, you know, prospects? You've been asking about that, I mean?
Yes.
We spoke with several of the county officers, and so we're going to take a determination today, potentially have some discussion. So we have to, so that whoever sells is going to get out of time for that problem. So I'll call it.
What are you thinking that of?
Two, two of the best, yeah. Everybody wanted it about six weeks, so in March, there's a table. So I think we'll still fall well within urgency of still having a good product.
So we need a motion to approve the resolution for the sale of the property that we have already asked last meeting. All those in favor?
No, we need a motion first.
So moved.
Aye.
Kathy, it is?
Rex?
Kathy, that's about it now.
All those in favor?
So, are we eyeing or voting, did we get a sign?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Did you eye or no eye?
Eye.
You're a baller, so thanks. No eye. Okay. Got it.
How long's it favorite for Mark? Opposed?
Yeah.
Stevie, for pressing the mission.
When's the that comes back? We'll get up later.
Kathy's got it later, so just don't leave it before, make sure he's going to sign everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here on the clock.
Okay. We're going to do the salary rankings first. Everybody should have gotten the email with all of this. We can do it all as one if you want. If you have any questions about community degrees, uh, we can try to answer those. Ian's here for community corrections. We can add a question. Uh, so fire away if you have questions with Bree and myself or Ian can answer. Don't think anybody's served to know.
I think I can give an explanation. I don't know.
I got basically as much as the budget.
Yeah. So there was an error on our part at Community Corrections when the salaries were, put it into low, loud, how do you say it, loud?
Wow.
And what happened is Stephanie Beaver is case manager at Community Corrections. She's the supervisor of the case managers. Case managers' salaries are based on experience on the probation officer scale. What's unique about Stephanie is, is that she didn't start as a case manager at Community Corrections. She came in as administrative assistant, worked her way up into the supervisor role. So her years of experience as an employee and her years of experience as a probation officer are different. When we were putting the numbers into loud, we took for granted that her years of experience doesn't match. And the, the wrong years of experience was used to calculate her pay. So it wasn't caught until the first pay period of 2023, when Stephanie called me and said, did you give me a raise I didn't know about? And I said, well, I wish, but no. And she said, well, I think my pay's wrong. And so we called Bree and Shannon and realized where the error was. After consulting with my board president, Judge Conrad, while he feel like Stephanie deserves the added boost in her salary, it wouldn't be fair to the other two case managers who are also on that pay scale for not getting a boost as well. And so Judge Conrad recommended that I come for you and ask that you give her a pay cut back to the actual rate that was originally submitted to DOC and the advisory board when our budgets were done last spring for our grant. So I'm happy to answer any questions. It's embarrassed.
Do you guys have to, do you have to give money back? Is this based on the grants you received?
Raises at Community Corrections are done through project income, so it doesn't affect the grant at all. We saw the DOC about this first, and they, they're indifferent. Since it's project income, we can do an additional appropriation at the end, leave it how it is. We can do an additional appropriation and not require that they pay back what's been overpaid, or we can change it. And there's no, it's not DOC money, so they don't care. So really, it's, it's the, the project income money that's here in the county. So Stephanie is prepared. She knows about this. She's prepared to have that money deducted out of her check if that's the route that we go. Personally, I feel like her honest, well, if her honesty, we wouldn't have realized it. And I personally would not, prefer not to penalize her and have money taken out of her check for the next however many weeks because I feel truly bad about what happened. So that is up to you guys. I don't know, Bree, I haven't really thrown that one at you. We talked about whether we would deduct it over one, two, or three pay periods, but...
I think we just make the correction, leave well enough alone after that.
And we would just do an additional appropriation at the end of the year in project income so that the actual amount paid over would match what was on, is on our records, so.
Have any idea how much the overpayment would have been?
Is it 600? Do you remember?
Four, six, seven, seven, seven.
I'm sorry?
Four, sixty-seven, seventy-seven.
Four, sixty, so. It's under, under $500, but still, I mean, the next check's $500 less. I mean, yeah, so.
Exactly. I'd make a motion to, to disprove the correction and leave the, the rest alone.
It's a good way to put it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm not sure how else to put it.
Fred?
Bob?
Have a motion to approve the recommended changes as presented. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions on 4-3's next meeting, right?
What's that?
4-3's the next meeting?
Thanks. Are you coming Wednesday? Either of you?
It's during the day, right?
Yeah.
Oh, this week? I'll be out of town. Or what, I say?
What's that?
I will, I don't know if you'll be watching.
Yeah, there's like three or four of them. So what we're talking about, Indiana Office of Court Services is coming this week, starting Wednesday, for I think three or four sessions. They're going to be here, Mary Kay Hudson, and several, several per staff members, and we're meeting out at the jail. We're doing what's called system mapping for the judicial and law enforcement systems in Adams County. So we're going to break down from the time that the sheriff's department arrests someone until they're completed and, and done with whatever their sentence, whatever their programs might be, and kind of mapping it out to see if there's anything that we could do more efficiently, anything that someone's doing that someone else doesn't know about, and just kind of put it all on paper for Adams County. And so Judge Conrad has authorized that, and there could be some changes as a result of this, but we'll see what happens when it's all done over. So.
Meetings are the 16th, the 23rd, and then the 7th of the three meetings.
16th, 23rd, and 7th.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Okay, we have remaining salary ordinance items. You've already got community corrections. If you'd like to do the rest as a whole, we could do that. Just need a motion in second unless you had questions on any of the others.
I'll make the motion to accept the salary ordinance proposed.
Oh. Okay.
Second.
All right, so Rex taking care of the mailhead.
We need to go.
Some more additions.
Move the vote on the salary.
It sounds like you just got this motion. Oh, you got a motion second?
I'm jumping again.
All those in favor of a motion? Opposed?
So I didn't think that. I'm still going to do the correction.
Yeah, you are.
Okay.
On the salary, they changed it that it was effective today?
Yeah.
On, on which one?
For community corrections.
I think they just go correct the four, sixty-seven, seventy-seven, just let that go. We'll take care of that at the end. Everything else, they improve that news.
No.
What would you ask it?
So it needs to be changed to effective...
Today?
To 218. You started it in anterior.
So what does that add?
That's on there is what she's going to go to.
So instead of one more, it should say 218?
Yes.
Okay.
If they're, if they're, they don't have to back. We have to fix everything.
And I, and I don't, yes, it was fine up here. So we just change the date?
Yeah, the date is changed.
Okay.
And that's for new rates.
Okay, that date is, it might change.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Many of those were preparations, the whole of Warden County general. The commissioners will be... The commissioners will be aware of this. Council should be aware of this as well. That might be the one that's not, but last year, I M I closed the facility here in this area. Which meant that the surveyor's office could not get tile quickly. When tile breaks, they need it quickly. So they are trying to get a supply of various sized tiles to store and have on hand with them. So they ask for this money from the commissioners. And when they pay the commissioners back. Mike, did you want to come out or? Bree, did you want to explain a little better than I am how that works, how they pay it back and so forth and so on?
Look.
I can unless Mike wants to.
Let me start.
There you go.
So we have had an inventory the last couple of years to sort of overhaul more of tile at the garage out there at the old Jatlea, the old landfill. And it's there because the guys, when they do tile repair, they can pick it up in the morning and go out and repair. They don't have to run and get tile all the time. It's just not local like Tony said anymore. So this would be a corporation to restock what we've had out there this spring with. It's all reimbursed from the drainage, the drainage systems every time it's used. It's tracked and it'll be reimbursed back to the county or from the county general to, no, from, yeah. How does the reimbursement work? So it's a lot of the system maintenance.
Claim for drainage maintenance and I pay it back into county.
County general, yes.
And I'm working on a spreadsheet that commissioners have asked, forty thousand, I'm going to do a spreadsheet of, so it can be tracked, I guess, that like if they borrow, if they ask to borrow fifty thousand in tracking, to make sure that it is returned back.
Comes back in, yeah.
Maybe they did a similar thing for you last year, Brad, and when we stopped some, it was, that was early, senior, fifty thousand.
It was the same year.
Fifty thousand was, we found that what's not in that for the year. Very, very bad. But it was, it was faulty. I knew at this time.
That's right. I said it gets reimbursed from due. From the drainage system maintenance funds. It gets reimbursed out of, and it's used in whatever system it's used. There's a hundred and, or two, I don't know, a hundred and forty drainage systems in the county.
Yeah. What they do for you, like on county located tile, like we, we, when we have ones that break down, as farmers, we can call surveyor's office and they can go fix it. So when, whatever they plug in there is what they bill. Or if I'm, you know, if Mike says, you know, it's going to be two weeks till we get there, but yet we want to work that field the next year or two, we're fixing ourselves. Get the tile ourselves and then submit a bill with the surveyor for what the tile is and then get reimbursed out of it.
Or we give him the tile to repair it.
And they do the labor.
Another good thing about too is the surveyor has some revenues on there that go to the lift desk and that goes to county general.
Yeah, all them funds, all that maintenance fund money is in your general bank. So the interest goes back into that fund, not into.
This, I'm, I don't have, I'm not necessarily, I'm just curious. So do you want to do that? So if that's, I mean, essentially it's going from one fund to another. So.
Both interest.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious.
Shannon, you got a comment?
Part of the thing, I think, it comes out of that line, goes back to the county general and does it. Yeah. Be approached that line. So.
So you know, that line, I kind of asked to trust a little bit. Do you agree? How does that line item get funded if I can ask?
You can't, you can't receipt into an expense. So whenever they do the claim, I pay it into a receipt, which I think I've been paying it into the transfer receipt line items. But they can't go back into this. That's why they're doing an additional plus two, so that there's a hundred thousand in that line item for them to make their purchases.
Right. But I think you're asking how the ditch maintenance fund gets funded.
Yeah.
Ditch assessments on your property taxes.
Yeah.
If you look at your dis assessment, it'll say exactly what located ditch that applies to.
Yeah. Some of it has a minimum amount and some of them just has a assessment of what was spent in that system.
And if there's a major project, like we just did one, it's related accounting located tile across one of our farms, then that's divided up percentage wise of land owners that have water to go into that, or do they just pay a special assessment?
And another thing about the maintenance or the repairs of these legal drains are we have a couple of weeks in the spring and a couple of weeks in the fall. It might stretch out. The guys are working today, so it's, does stretch a little farther, but it's muddy. So the farmers don't like you to go in their fields when the crops are growing. So it's replant and afterplant. But this has to be done. So it's a short window to keep the guys happy, to keep us happy in that farm. So.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad, Bob?
Yes.
I would have been second to approve the. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The rest of the additions are all ARPA. And I think we've said several times that that money does not carry over near the year. So all we can get out there is what was left that still needs to be paid of what was approved last year. And we're kind of having to gather our equipment and all that stuff. If you have specific questions, we'll try to answer those. But these are simply what has already been approved, had to carry over to continue of paying.
This is the foreman here, categorizing the staff of four million, five hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred nine thousand.
As a matter of fact, I think, Bree, did you send the spreadsheet over?
I just, no, but I just.
She just sent you an email and a spreadsheet of all the what's left, what we issued and all that span.
And it's up to date with the claims. There's like four claims I think that's going to be in the claims like tomorrow. So I just updated it and that's all it says and all we're doing is true.
This, this, this going here though, for the first point I'm going to change is just approving the funding about the value approved. Right.
Yeah, because right, right now, there's nothing appropriated in ARPA for twenty twenty-three. So I did the additional for the balance of the projects that have been approved. But if anything else is approved going forward, we'll have to do.
Do more. Right, okay. I make a motion to approve.
In a second. Have a motion to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Am I? Opposed?
What are the metal detectors? For that, it's not bad. It says that bad air is on. You've been really good.
I guess I.
You're going to find some stuff. You're the only one that can do that.
I guess, well, Julie, I, I guess, kind of have one other thing that I've spoken to several of you about. Fred, did you want to address that special donation that we were discussing?
Like last year, we approved, we just had to say on how we were funded, that we, I don't know, I didn't mean this, it sounded like Lex found out some money that actually been sitting around that we haven't used. That we couldn't use for this, but we couldn't have asked for money to.
Nineteen thousand, three forty-nine, eighty-nine, two years.
Yeah, so for.
Economic development.
Economic development, yeah. But it's, it's, it wasn't for a study, it was to execute a plan for, as I understand, so we just need to.
And we had never, we had never done an official vote. Council commissioners had both had a consensus that it was fine as long as the money was either ARPA or outside of county general, special donation is outside of county general. That was money that came a few years back, Rex, I don't remember which year you.
It's twenty sixteen.
Was it? And at that time, they sent, I think it was a hundred twenty-five, a hundred thirty-five, something like that. So we've had eighty-five thousand dollars in a pretty good amount of time. So this is a great use for that. It's outside county general. And we're using money that's sitting there. So, and that takes care of, we, we are the only entity that had not officially signed off on this would take care of that issue.
So we got to do that donation fund. We're going to do the the year total, whatever.
You can do the nineteen, three forty-nine, eighty-nine.
We have that.
For the two years. We wanted to bring out a mixture.
Yeah, I'm fine with doing years.
Yeah.
That's what I remember discussing last time.
Kind of, that was decided. Yeah. Obviously, a motion second and a vote, just to make it official.
I'll make a motion to approve funding for the, for the, for the special donation fund.
I'll second.
For that total, whatever it is.
Both would second to approve the two-year payment to economic development.
And I, I really was, Julie, we had discussed this, you, Bree and myself. Since that's over, that we got that, there would have been a resolution by that time.
Right, there should be one somewhere.
So, okay. That's what's coming? We should know as fast as I do.
It's what?
I'm looking it up.
Okay.
I mean, if, yeah. If for some reason it wasn't, back then, we could.
We could just do a home rule fund for that.
Yeah, so.
Special donation fund, that'll be fine.
So enough for there.
So it looks like that fund received two hundred thousand at hospital. I spoke with state board in March of twenty-one that it cannot be transferred to county general, issuing besides what to spend it on and council, but from raise the money.
So again, I think we're good. I mean, that makes us good.
Four minutes, twenty twenty-one dash.
Yeah, so we're all set.
True.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed?
What else? I think that's all that I know. Well, I did a little other thing about if you, you just prepared to answer questions on the spreadsheet that she just sent out, if you have any.
I do have one.
Okay.
The hundred twenty thousand repairs and maintenance service complex. When we, I think that was for the roof, right? Through the, the hundred twenty.
That's, yeah.
There's a payment coming out of thirty-four thousand dollars on the bridge. Sleeves eighty-five thousand dollars.
That might have been the elevator.
Where was it at?
Is that the elevator?
That's the elevator. The elevator was the same amount as the roof. And the elevator, they had to approve parts in the beginning in order to go to place the art.
Right, that's, that's a big.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, they had to get that before they would have anything, so the shipping interviews.
There's, there's nothing on here for the roof yet.
Okay.
And I think that's because they haven't got quotes yet, right? And we.
No, we, I think some commissioners asked them to get quotes, yeah.
They had to get quotes and so we weren't even going to do the regulation for it until we know, know, know. So one thing is, I don't think they're willing to get. So like the heat and cooling, it's only three hundred thousand approved for that project. As of right now, we have one thousand seventy dollars, eighty-one cents left for the project. If you add the quotes up, the quotes were like almost three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So it needs to be decided if or where that extra money is going to come from. Do you guys approve an extra twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand to be paid from ARPA for the heating and cooling, or are you going to pay it from farmers?
I think ARPA, that's where we're taking the rest of it from, right?
Yeah, so far. We just really have to remember when these quotes and that are being done and we approve the projects, you have to approve the project for enough to cover the entire invoice because if every project goes over by even a hundred dollars, by the end, you're going to be out of money in the fund.
I'll, I'll, Mike, we can only approve that's in front of us as far as, so, I mean, the numbers just need to be right when they come, come here.
Steve, do you know what's going, what's causing it to go over? The weight, the material?
Uh, this is for the HVAC. I kind of missed that one.
The original, the lit, the amount that they came and asked for over the three hundred thousand?
Three hundred even.
When we started doing the math on everything that was asked for, it added up to more than three hundred thousand. So she's, so she's saying do they want to approve the additional amount that's going to be necessary out of ARPA or for somewhere else?
Yeah, I would have to look at the invoices. I'm sorry.
And it's probably something that'll all have to be done next month because Julie, you'll have to amend the resolution, right? To change the dollar amount.
Correct. Well, either amend the resolution or just make another reservation for an additional like we did with some of the other things in December.
But, but that'll be a next month thing.
Yeah. But we went to my ARPA, right? I mean, we took everything else out of there.
But I'll, I'll look into that. I'll talk to Rick to see what it was.
Rick was up there when we added it.
Yeah, Rick was standing. Rick was in my office whenever we.
He went through all of it when we added it.
Had a little bit of quotes.
Did he see any obvious changes?
No. He agreed. He didn't know why three hundred thousand was, was approved when the quotes added up to the like three twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's all agreed. They'll say ten percent. And that's why I was asking if it, if it gets approved. Is Rick in charge of it? Rick is insane, a purveyor or signing an agreement to start purchasing equipment? Then, then is the vendor going back to, well, no, it's less.
I mean, so like right here, I have the BTS one. And that one alone was three hundred and three thousand, two thirty-eight. So right there, the one quote.
That's not including corporate.
The one, yeah, that, that one was over the three hundred thousand.
It wasn't that one. Thanks. Do you know some of those quotes? Yeah, we did. I think that's about it. Because some of that, because the original asked for ARPA, you know, was based on what's probably.
Still, when it comes to that, that's something that's put in front of us, green.
It should have been John.
So.
Just a matter of, at the beginning, maybe it wasn't doing exactly what was going to happen and three hundred thousand was asked for, it's a simple matter of, I guess.
Because at that time too, we didn't afford facility.
Right.
Close this all these.
That, that's part of it.
The main project. But so, yeah, there were initial things, there were initial things that came after the initial, after the class was granted. But there still isn't a agreement with anybody. Still, still in the quotes.
This is a signed agreement that is a three oh three, two.
But.
Another signed agreement that was for the same project that adds in to make it like three twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying is there's two signed agreements for a project that was three hundred and twenty-seven, but we only approved three hundred thousand.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's where the difference is coming from.
If you answer all of that, I'm sticking right back to the next month then.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just making sure that it's not something that is signed and we're not going to get pinged again.
It's pretty much paid for. They, Rick did come talk to us about that. They.
The generator, he had.
The generator, he says, is going to be the same way that that project.
It's been my goal, it's a ball because of engineering type thing, there are things that came up after the.
The heat and cooling thing is like pretty much paid for. They have to wait until they get started up and they can't start it up until it's.
Sixty, sixty-five degrees or something.
And then we'll make our final payment.
Yeah. So anyway, that'll be coming up next.
Train's going to come back in the summer and finalize the.
Sure. Yeah. In the middle, yeah. Yeah, that's just, that's just what you guys had.
Next month.
Julie, we have, we have to work on that and get it all situated. And then Julie, we also want to work on for next month on that kind of thing.
Right, yes.
Sometimes it might be better just to approve a project.
We can't do it. Instead of come back next month.
Well, they can do that, but council has to put a dollar figure on it.
So we're just making it right. And I think that's. And I think that's all, that's all I have.
Any other further discussion in the matter?
Other matters.
The matters, Popoy presented, do you have anything that you care to share?
Just a reminder, while you're talking about approving money for the housing subcommittee contractor, uh, they are having, and I think you've all got invitations to the housing supposedly. Wednesday, twenty-second, eight thirty, or one thirty. So that's gonna navigate around, say, uh, there's, that's some of the research that's still, uh, so there's realtor developers.
What?
Our wheels, like I say, I think everyone in council has been invited to.
And how do we ever see that invitation, I don't remember seeing it.
Wednesday, Wednesday, one day?
Wednesday.
That's a matter, sir?
Uh, I don't have a lot of creation, I, I bet, uh, everybody invested on, in my, so that it's possible that you guys have got this. But you are all, who, probably anybody else willing to go out.
So, okay.
Yeah, so you all seem to like.
No, no, I'm saying, right.
Which, if you believe some money for the housing, supposedly, this would give you the, you know, we're, you're talking this. It's, uh, Riverside, O'Meara Center, forty-eight, I'll be there this time.
The other thing I would bring up is to put a burden people's ear, is, um, you're just looking at several different things, but they are let friends and possibly to, to more effectively fund the shares department, things of that nature. And so, when I think there needs to become some numbers available, that Karen Bates can make it here, uh, to work with us on some things, but maybe do a, uh, what do you call it, a special session, a working session or whatever. But when that becomes available in March or April, um, I would propose doing something like that. Not saying it's a Monday right now, just putting it out there to think about it, so. And I think, we've got, now, I've talked with several people about it, um, Steve, you know, I've talked about it, I've heard about it, except, actually, I see it a little bit differently, but I think, um, I may have mentioned that to you this morning, but, yeah, and, so, uh, uh, just something that gives some consideration till we get there, but we just have to look at it. You know, see if it's, would be a good move to do, so. But I think we're gonna agree with that.
Uh, the other, the other thing, I guess, we do have, uh, the, uh, potential several of the firemen coming up, so, Ray, as always, that, that, that sells, that would come to county general. So, at that point, you know, just a little bit forward thinking, do you mind? Uh, what decided, that's where you want to leave that money, or you want second one, with the audit and all, to direct that. But, you know, that's just something coming out of, stuff that you have to act on.
Just thinking we had decided already to put that into, or was it rainy day? I thought we already.
So that, that's up to you guys, I mean, once it sells, and it's.
But was that in that resolution?
No, no, that, that was just that you agreed to sell.
What's, what's that, Mike?
So that was a big part of it, was it's gotta be earmarked, gotta be set aside, we don't want that to stay in there.
Because, uh, so it means sale, there will be, you know, some, some questions, that's.
I think when, when that came up, we were discussing rainy day, and we contacted the state board about other possibilities of the world. And I think word was, you can create a fund for that. Create a real fund for that, uh.
We'd have to be pretty detailed, or, um, you'd have.
Rainy day, you have to be able to, in the future, to get it out. Would have to be ordinance that would pass through council to get it that money.
The only way for that to work is the interest, is if we were to do the interest ordinance, because the.
Well, that would be.
That's okay.
Wouldn't you be able to do that as homes and funds ordinance? That the, the, for this account will stay with this account?
I don't know how that would, I don't know, because we have a, an interest ordinance that spells out which funds, I don't know if that would have to be in with it.
Okay, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
It's up, I mean, they want the interest to go with it, or do you want it to just go to general?
Okay. Because right now, it goes to general, right, the money earned off the cash, when it goes into general?
That's what I have to say.
There's, there's like, I don't know, eight to ten months to get interest. Pretty much your tax-driven ones get interest, and then your ordinary ones get the interest.
And they all go back to general, they have interest.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, your health insurance, your federal, your assessment, highway, there's like eight to ten months when interest comes in, I pay it into, so no, not all our interest comes into.
Well, right now, the money that, but the money that that property is earning right now, in the form of rents, is going into county general, so we would just have to decide, do we wanna keep that the same or we want the now interest instead of rents going into whatever other account? And that's something that will also be coming up in the future, but you all will have to, for the rainy day, however, whatever, whatever it is, become the office, do the really, we get that.
Yeah.
Big red.
It's easy enough to do, it's just a matter of, you make the decision, and we draft the ordinance.
Yeah.
Again, the other question I have is, is partly for you, and partly for you is, how, how, how would be the best way to handle the expenses, uh, on the sale? Uh, as far as commission and advertising expenses, where would be a good place?
I would say that it comes out of your ministry budget.
I think it's your budget, they expect.
With, like, consulting machines or something.
No, the advertising of it would just come out of your regular advertising.
Yeah, yeah. As well, now, we have to do surveys.
We say, we say advertising, a lot of advertising out of your budget anyways. So whenever I get it from the paper, there would just come out that regular advertising.
That would be included in your, uh, contract with the realtor.
Sure. I, I don't know if we would have to do an additional verification.
So that's my, I would say, better, I would call it, the income minus, minus.
Yeah, I mean, as well as per year.
Get it out ourselves.
I would just think of it as a normal.
You don't know what, I don't think you would pay, I think you would pay, you would pay, I'll, we. That is a person. Yeah, yeah, right, you would have, and so.
Yeah.
You know, that, you know, the percentage of this.
If we don't get.
We don't ever take that.
I will see it with, I'm not crazy. Just when the money comes in. I'm just, so mean, when they give us the, I know when other people have done stuff, but like auction, that, I'll get like a paper that breaks down, I'll scan that in with like, the quietest, like, we paid it.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So we, so you're, you're okay with that, exactly, now?
Yeah.
We're a person.
Yeah, that's my.
Good.
Do we know what the percentage is gonna be on that, in chance?
Uh, we're, it's best that I will be answering, like.
A bit more.
There's.
Yes.
Any other matters to be brought, if there was this today before we.
Uh, I think everybody got emailed from, 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 back there about a month ago, but he, he mentioned this morning, you, you wanna come up and say anything?
I think you can general comments.
Um, I'm actually a newcomer here, uh, been here a little over four years, from California, uh, thank you, wish you didn't say why.
We know why, it's the first, first we always get.
Um, anyway, we will, uh, we, uh, built a home up on, uh, nine hundred north and triple zero. Uh, there's, uh, several homes that have gone up there. Um, the challenge we're having is we can't get cable or internet. And we haven't been able to since we've been here. The houses are all built for it, but we can't get it. Uh, sent some messages out to different people, and Fred and John actually responded back to me. Um, gave me some suggestions of what to try, and I did try that, and both companies came back and said, well, thank you very much, but thank you, we can't do it. So we're still sitting around going, we can't get internet. Um, I had a chuckle quietly, when you were first starting, and you're going, we're waiting for something to load? Um, if I try to do something on the internet at home, and whether I use my laptop or my phone, half the time, I sit around for four or five minutes before anything even pops up. And it gets real annoying. So my thought process was, since we don't live in the city, which by the way, I didn't find out until I went and got a library card. Um, I thought I lived in Decatur, since my address is Decatur, and I don't live in Decatur, I live in Township, I think it's called. Um, I was hoping that maybe the county council, as a group, might be able to somehow approach the various internet companies that are servicing this general area, and maybe with a little influence, maybe convince them into taking a look at that section of the county to run a cable or whatever. The reason I even asked that is that directly across the street from me, I live right on the intersection. Directly across the street from me, on the other corner, they have internet cable. I mean, we're talking two hundred feet away. Going east on nine hundred north, halfway up the road, they all have internet services. The companies have all told me, they're not planning to run the cabling the rest of the way on nine hundred. And it doesn't really make any sense to me. Um, here's why it doesn't make sense. The first year we moved in was, uh, October of two thousand eighteen. In the spring of nineteen, um, I was doing some yard work, and I saw this gentleman sitting near the intersection of, uh, nine hundred north, on our property, in a big hole, playing wires and cables. I walked over and asked him what he was doing. He goes, well, this is internet cabling. I said, which kind? He goes, it's called media com. I go, okay, something I never heard of. So I went to media com, and he said, oh, sure, no problem, we can get you internet. They sent a guy out, comes up and says, oh, no, the cables don't run here, your area. But they have a connection service box on our property. Well, as an individual, I can't do anything. I can't get any of the companies to do anything. I tried Frontier, Tomscast, Century Link, and Media Com. And they all said, no, we don't have internet services. I'm just hoping maybe there was something the county council might be able to do with their influence, since these companies do periodically have to ask to be able to do things. I mean, that's really the only reason I came today, was to see if there's anything you can do. I know you can't give me an answer, I understand that. I'm throwing it out to you as a council, and maybe you can think about it, discuss it, and maybe someday we'll, we'll do something.
I will, I will say, that's come up in discussions before, and I might think, oh, but it's, uh, it's really part of economic development for, for our county, for our area, because we want to be an attractive area to move to. Um, and I know that during, I talked about things at the Stairwell, and even, I know, I've heard of this going, but counties and stuff, but it's something that we really need to try to work with this, at the Stairwell, too, to find out that, their, how they're gonna help or fund, and and all that stuff, and so we, we don't have any good answers right now.
No, we don't.
It's, it's definitely something that kind of in the process, but also not real sure where, where in the process.
Well, again, I just wanted to raise the issue, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Think I did, put everything out of it.
Just wanted to meet you guys, uh, heads up, um, overtime budget for Sherif's office has been taking a hit with two new guys being trained, um, are training with FLEX, and some training members put on by the Indiana Law Department Training Board is, is it's hitting my overtime budget. Uh, we wash the things as best we can, um, I'm hoping it slows down, um, but the next month, with FLEX training, uh, the deputies coming in, the jailers coming, that's coming in and training when they're not working, so I'm just letting you guys know, you're gonna see the hit, uh, this first half of the year. I'm hoping it slows down afterwards. If it doesn't slow down, uh, since this is the first year of the overtime, uh, no comp time, uh, um, my plan would be, uh, in the, later in the year to come in, if I have to, for an additional. But I also want you to know, I'm renegotiating the contract with the federal prisoners for fifty-five dollars a day to seventy-six dollars a day. So that will generate six, maybe three thousand five hundred, just for the inmates being there, and that's planned on twenty-five inmates, which we're keeping that now, because there's only three places to hold the federal inmates. Mother County, Adams County, and place in, uh, Northwest, Ohio, so I don't expect those numbers to fall. Um, and then we still have money that goes in the general, and this money goes into general for the transportation, uh, when you do more of those quotes, and uh, virtual, they actually passed, do virtual payments in the general.
That's.
So, uh, it's six hundred thousand, it's six hundred thousand additional, that comes in to county general for twenty-five inmates, uh, seventy-six dollars a day, three sixty-five a year. So that's what that, the, the house, that's not the increase from the. No, the increase that I have, the first four years, I think we brought in around, uh, I think it was eight hundred and some thousand the first four years. This will be yearly at this, at twenty-five inmates. So, it's an increase.
The increase now is a bit.
Yeah. Um, I was, I was trying to put a hundred dollars back, but my expenses don't generate that, because I, 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 that goes through all the expenses of the jail. And I know the Tulsa, Ohio, they have, they also have eighty, uh, corrections officers, it's a much larger facility, so their expenses are more, so they get more. About two hundred and fifty thousand increase from last year.
Correct, correct.
Uh, and I see that staying the same, uh, for seven years, uh, I just don't see it going away. But I just wanna bring that up to you, to where, if I do have to come back for overtime, I'll just, this is where I'm gonna take it from, because it's still a little bit at the jails, but I'm gonna become a general. And I'm, I'm gonna get ready later and see if I can get, uh, what type of charter shows you how much that's coming, because this contract was just redone, uh, the last month, so, uh, we haven't seen the full benefits of that yet, we're about there.
Still, I saw that, uh, for, it sounds like the Allen County, it's not like with the location, for their jail, right?
Yes, they re-bought property, and all of that, sad, uh, they, they're still in design phase, they don't plan on breaking ground this year, or that's four or five years out.
Yes, yeah.
Because that, that's a two hundred and thirty million dollar project that, so.
Um, I mean, ultimately, that is an service that, that can hear you, think.
I, I think that was with the, but, uh, we will not be without them, just like we were, we, we, we had a, uh, before we were, that we were edge and funny, uh, fifteen to twenty, and then we got real worried because they just weren't moving bad. And then we got high back to twelve, or twenty-five, and then FLEX went September, because we're the primary place now in the, uh, federal. They should get some power, they win, so first, because we're the closest, and then they might fund them, they may, they're Ohio, just depending. Uh, but usually, we get them for the first, because we're the closest to the federal courthouse. So we tend to keep them for a little bit, and then, once they go through their process, then, uh, once they're sentenced, then they ship them out to federal, to the dentures. Now, you're saying quick, quick math, it's two hundred and four thousand increase from last year.
Yeah.
So it's awesome. Um, why the seventy-six, is it, do they have a weight? They had a little formula, uh, based on your expenses, um, and she, she, and said, I went back, she was, can you increase your expenses? I said, well, no. And then I was asking a question, basically, what it comes down to, we are, the manpower costs is lower than other places, because they have a huge, uh, they have a much larger uh, plenty of correction officers. I said, we have twenty-five, they have like eighty-some, so that's their increase, and that's what's allows them to get paid a little bit. So, so, yeah, it's, 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 it's well with the negotiation, for sure. And then, I have no idea, uh, when we do transportation, the transportation is thirty hours an hour, uh, for two officers, uh, that's mileage, and that's just, that's a standard form that I would still have a solicitor. That's mileage and that just, that's a standard form that Allen still hasn't sophisticated and that's just paid on monthly. Things that County General gets, I don't see what that is. And that's that at the time is also coming out of overtime budget. That's needing, that's another reason why it puts us far to go back overtime. However, how we, we move some people around, we were giving overtime for those transportations because of how we moved the deputies and sergeants around, the sergeants basically were doing that, keeping the deputies over there for their normal business hours. You and myself and Eric have also taken some of the transports, so we're not getting into the overtime range. So and get a little washing time as best we can, also when we can, a little wash time. So, but if I said, if you look at overtime, we're thinking down to like low 80%. So we used almost 20% of overtime, which I had in the second month. So it's a little, it's on my attention a little bit, but I said, we're working towards it. If it continues, this is my solution. If we can take care of it in the second half year, then we, I just want to keep that space to see overtime.
Is that overtime coming out of the County General jail now or is it coming out of the wet fund?
Right, and it's coming out of our, our budgeted overtime. We're not, we don't have the overtime out of, of the County General. And if it slows down, we'd be fine. Cause then if we can move stuff around, I'll move stuff around. But it's just depending where it keeps up. We have one in the academy, one of us, he graduates end of March, the weather goes on. We should be done training all the deputies by August, so that last four and a half, we should be fully staffed and hopefully things will calm down a little bit. Any questions?
Do you, thanks, Dan.
Anything else to be brought to us this morning?
Do you have anything, sir?
Well, this isn't all your problems. See, kids. But then, cause I, I mean, problem I knew a little bit about cats or anything, but like before this last big cold start, someone dumped a bunch of them out in my property, most of them died off. I live right down at the fire station, Main Street. And then a couple of summer, he's got, we had like rubbing cats in our yard, trying to breed with a couple of females. And then they're there 24 hours a day. I caught a bunch of them and turned them in. Now I was told I can't turn anymore in.
Where do you turn them into?
They're sheltered.
Which one? Ours. I bet.
I'm trying to throw South End Street, I bet, I'm remains only six times in the last.
I just ask for a pause and, you know, so there, I didn't. The county facility.
I catch them, they're feral.
They're completely feral. And I think they did the, the last time, please stop catching these because they're, like you said, they're feral, they're not amiable. And either we're going to have to euthanize or they didn't have a solution either. They're leaving, they got some problems added with the city rat, didn't know who it was. They said they wanted to move on the cage, these were live trapping, they were full. They want to be good, catcher facilities, but what do we do? Keep it for five days and then they have expensive euthanize.
Where are they coming from? Where are they, where all these cats coming?
Some of them were, he killed those bobblers, Third Street, close down to 12th Street. And then another one was a alley, there's following eight people that threw water out 24/7.
That's a lot of strays.
Opossums, raccoons all out now, they got, and they all came out, all that got running around. And I came to the raccoon, man, why can't? Look at that, D M says I gotta kill my property and bury it or tell it loose. And season would be pretty happy, I'm happy if I shoot that bastard in the cage of my property.
But you can't, don't do that. You can't do that. But you gotta, don't shoot it inside the side of us. Outside of us, we had, we had some down, same thing, driving cats. And because, because the shelter is completely overrun with cats. And I think they blocked those for both of them, please don't catch them anymore. I don't know what the, what that solution is other than the county's going to absorb an immense amount in euthanization charges to take care of.
So how expensive is euthanization? I actually lived down in Landville, Charlotte, I just lost my little daughter to zoo years after this was a project.
Discussion would be great on that, we could zoom on tweets about it. But I said, this is just a market in the last couple of weeks. So we're just trying to be generous, change the best we can. We can say this, I'm sure actually it's true, that he was, like I said, saying, please don't trap them, it's a fox.
I think I should be, newspapers could fit something, my release is about a lot of the society, and we have listed a lot of Dalmat High School station. More of you guys are stories and articles. Very good, this is originally, you know, and it's not, people come by, I thought we kept your roost on Downton with kittens and everything. Half the time the eyes are mad, it has to, and the first song, now she's going to be dead and. He works in, and there was a guy, I had a rabbit that I could drop him off and he let the coyotes polish the ball, but he's not fable.
And I wish I was too, the Mexican animals, you can't do with what you used to four years ago. Yeah, we've been vaccinated with so many. My cat is still, that's a, that's a, all dogs, all cats. So you can't trap it and take it out by the river somewhere?
You're fine, you're fine.
But maybe that's your option.
I think it might be something, they get the sun by themselves, they don't want to be stuck with.
Well, the wild, maybe we got to chase, be, be better.
There might be something that the newspapers could talk to the animal shelter, they could talk to the bear, get something out there so that maybe people stop doing this.
But I said, we flew to those, eleven cats in the yard, four of them trying to screw on. And they were there for six hours trying to do it. It's noon, they never got them till 12:00, it's been real long. And it's like in the front of the house, in the back of the house. I have a bunch of silverbacks, so I just got them open my cage, so you guys got to be first.
Dan says you can't come up.
It's against. She go over at midnight and give water to people's dolls and water. And she's a sad, well, I heard the week, grabs one water in the house and neuter it. It's just not going to take a bunch of other newspapers.
The newspapers could put something in, I think, help this issue.
That, my newspaper also put some remarks.
To where, always. Yeah, we've been, we've been working on that, I've been talking to Chad and Jenny Springer, you know, let's say that. Cause, cause they were just like, you say they're.
A couple of times last year too, we had, there were dogs running loose in the river, but that's the kind of attack people, but we were, we were pleased, everybody was calling it, no, they couldn't. They really didn't know how to run them down, catch them.
Yeah, we should, you know, we've been caught, I think sometimes the police will pick out cages too, but, you know, as far as the city council, we're going to have to figure out if it's all true, so. I don't know what county was on the pass. You know, they're trying to find.
Well, I heard a lot, like I said, I've been outside traveling, also now they're out, they're worked, all those skinny bones. They're sitting there, they were fighting with a tie. Okay, we got to, we need to start trapping groundhogs here in a few weeks, so if we want to invasion groundhogs, we cut by the tracks.
Yeah, I would say, we, we hear what you're saying, the newspapers got that, the sheriff is here, we'll get as much out there as we can. We appreciate you, Kevin, for telling us about it, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other matters? You call for a motion before adjournment? I wasn't there.